Good evening. I do call this meeting to order, this work session to order at 6:10. Roll call?
Vasco Salinas, President.
Nareida Cantú, President.
Armin Garza, President.
Espochoa, President. Dr. Sainz, I do declare a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Thor. Can we all please stand for the flag of allegiance?
We do have a couple of public comments today. We will begin with Mr. Pablo Guerrero. Okay, then we'll go on to Mr. Diego Torres.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Flores read that you have three minutes, and he will be keeping time.
Yes, ma'am.
And he also mentioned that we cannot respond to public comments, but we're more than open and receptive to listen. You may proceed when you want, Diego.
We are here to ask that the traditional fall sports not be canceled, therefore allowing us to play this fall as originally scheduled. We feel that our voice to the students is not being considered or heard. It feels that those in positions to make decisions on our behalf are not looking at things from our perspective. Participation in activities and athletics after school provides an enormous outlet for La Jolla student athletes. The structure and discipline provided there for us football players, members of the band cheer, and various other sports and activities is just not something that can be reproduced at home and especially not in front of a computer screen. Some of the repercussions of not being allowed to participate in school for this fall will lead to more youth depression, volatile situations at home due to our parents trying to balance work with their children at home. Last but not least, the inability, especially for those for those of us where finances are daily struggle to potentially earn a college scholarship. Many of us who come from families who are struggling financially use athletes combined with sisters in the classroom to better ourselves. For many of our seniors, this will be our possible if we are able to showcase these abilities this fall to hopefully play at the next level. Not being able to participate in fall sports will not only prevent some of us from playing at the next level, but for those, the opportunity to pursue it at higher education. This may be lost opportunities for which there is no recovery later on in life. We understand that there are risks. There are risks every time we get into a car or step onto a sports field. Many of our age are already out and about. We also understand that we must take precautions and are ready to follow any protocols that the decision will put in place. Without the push by our coaches and our activity leaders to get good grades, we're collectively becoming lost. In conclusion, we hope you understand importance of participating in fall sports. We're asking you to consider the change that will allow us to return activities and athletics in October. Thank you for listening to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. We will now have José Valero.
Hello, guys. First of all, my name is José Valero. I'm a concern, a brother to a player, and I'm here representing not just him, I'm representing everyone in total. I'm just here. My thing is that all our life, we've been taught to never give up, never step down from any challenge. And now, I feel like the school is giving up on our students because they're not giving them the right to try, even just to try to try to play. They're giving up on them already before the season started. This decision was taken two months ago. We've been very vocal with Ms. Sainz and Ms. Villarreal about it. Not everyone has had the opportunity to have, to have, to come from a good house. Some people come from abusive houses. Some of us don't know that because you guys been always raised at the very top. Some of them, this is all they have, and you guys are taking back from them. And I don't think that's right. I think, I'm here, I've been here every morning since we've been trying to have meetings, trying to find a solution to work with Ms. Sainz, work with Ms. Villarreal, and I don't see anything that's been done. Yesterday, this morning, we were told that, that decision was made again. I'm like, did you guys even try to do anything? Like, do you guys even care about, about the kids? Yes, I know the health and everything, but I think there should be other options way within the decision. Every other district is having sports except us in Rioondo. Why is that? We all fall in the Igualbo County, don't we? Why do they get to have sports and not us? That's it, man. I mean, I'm done for it. I've been, I've been trying to say everything I can every morning, but it seems that you guys already just made your decision or giving up on the kids. And well, good luck with that. Because many kids don't want to be in this issue. Many kids are already starting to drop out because this is their motivation, just their daily motivation to come to school. I don't need to make a move. I'm done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Valero.
For the record, Mr. Cantú. Welcome, Mr. Cantú. Got here at 6:12. And Ms. Claudia Ochoa, welcome at 6:16. We'll move on with Mr. Noel Guerra.
I, I, I feel like we, we should be, we should be allowed to. I, I feel like we should be allowed to play sports because, because, because it, it, it is a good getaway from our problem, problem at home. Last year, I did have a, I did have an opportunity to, due to me breaking my, breaking my leg and, and hurting that, and hurting that, and hurting that, and hurting that, I would not be able to play my, my, that, that, that season. All of my friends, all of my friends, all of my friends and I, all of my friends and I have been spending, spending countless of, spending countless of hours working, working, working now, working out to, working out to get where, where, where we, where we, where, where we want at. And I believe, and I believe it is not fair that, that that the school board says, says, says that, says that we, we can't, 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 can't play. Every school in the valley, every school in the valley has been allowed to play except us. And, and, and I believe that is not fair. Parents, parents, parents should be given the choice. La, La Jolla, La, La Jolla, La, La Jolla, I guess they had, had stated that that the stu-, student con, 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 concerts. So, so, so I believe that the parents should, should, should be given the, should be given the, should be given the choice. I, 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 I have been bullied all, all of my life to, 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 to my talking. And, and, and the sport is the only way that, 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 that I could be, re, re, release my, 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 my stress. So I ask, please, please, please give us a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guerra. We'll move on to Mr. Adon Vallejo.
All right, so before anything, my name is Jared Vallejo. I'm here to talk about fall sports. I know all of us wanted to play this year, and I feel like we should have a choice. And if we would have a choice, I'm pretty sure we would all say yes, right? I don't know why we don't have a choice. That's, I don't know who that's up to. I just want to say that according to the rules or Greg Abbott or the UIL rules, they said that we can have, and we can have 50% of the people attend the games as long as we wear face protection and jerseys. We should have to take the safety precautions. I wish for a chance. There's a lot of people at home that are struggling with stuff, struggling with their kids. I mean, just, I'm a student at La Jolla. I wake up every day at 7:30 for school. Shouldn't we have a chance to just play? Every day is 7:30 just to watch a screen. I feel like we should watch something else every day. We struggle every day watching a computer every day. Don't you think? They say, oh, kids are always on their phones, kids are always on their tablets, kids are always on their computers. Just give us a chance to play then. That's all we're asking for, just one chance. That's my thing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on with Mr. Valero Carlos.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Valero. And for here, I'm just trying to get another chance to play because this is my last year, and I've been looking forward since I was little, elementary. And through the years I've been playing football, the coaches have told us not to give up. And what I've heard, that you guys have given up on us, that all of my fellow teammates said that, that in the, we could allow 50% of people in the stadium were just following, wearing their mask and giving their distance. And I just want you to guys to give us a chance to play because there's a lot of seniors out there. And younger, younger classmates are coming in, and they also want to give up, they also want to play with us. And my fellow, also some other around the locals and Hawaiians that they, they want to move districts, but I tell them not to move because we grew up here with the district. And I mean, it's a bit districted. There is, and I just want to have another chance to play. And that is it.
Thank you. We'll have Eddie Valdez next.
Hello, hello. Hello and good afternoon. I'm a student athlete from La Jolla ISD. I play football, and I've been playing football since I was little. My dad always raised me to love football as more of a sport, a lot more than a sport, as it got me through hard times, tough times with school, tough time with friends. And I'm sure there's a lot of kids at the house that have been going through hard times just staying at house. Staying at a house makes you go crazy sometimes, just not being able to go out, go play. It's just a hard thing that could take a toll on a kid, especially being young and being raised to go out there, go play, go run. It's a big toll that if you play on a little kid just to be staying at home on a computer screen. And I know, I see some familiar faces out here that my dad always told me that played football as little kids, and there are some great athletes, and that we're making huge plays for them at La Jolla, the mighty Coyotes that went 10-0 one time, that were feared. But now we're one of the only school districts to not be playing football this year, to not be playing sports this year. And I was raised, I want to be a mighty Coyote. I want to play for them. I want to be the starting QB for them. And now, there's some seniors that are not even getting their senior season, that are wanting to go make a change in their family, to go to college, be the first ones. And not just do it academically, but do it athletically. And there's kids that are staying at home right now, giving us hate. We're just going to spread the virus. It's a huge risk, but it's a risk that we're taking, that we're going to be out there on the field. So we, we should at least have a choice on it. And it gets me emotional because there's seniors that I've always looked up to playing football. A senior year, going out after games to go eat, celebrating W with the team, and then not even getting a chance to go practice, to go play. And if there's other schools that are playing, other districts, other states that have already been playing football games, and the numbers are still going down, then why can't we go out there and go give it our shot? And there's NFL that if there's a case, they'll postpone the game. There's MLB that they'll postpone the game. If there's a case, they'll give it two weeks. Scientifically, it's proven that it takes two weeks for the virus to start. So we should at least be giving the shot to go out there and try. And if anything happens, we could always cancel it, like y'all canceled it two months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Adrian Carizales.
Hello. I'm a student athlete at La Jolla High. I want to bring back fall sports because this, this is what us athletes do for a living. We dedicate our lives to the sport. We work, we work hard every day, morning, tonight, just to get stronger, faster, more elite. You guys might not understand where we're coming from because maybe some of you don't come from where we come from. These athletes came from nothing. We just want, we just want. People come, our athletes come from very poor communities, and this is our only chance to get out of where we come from, especially the seniors. We fight to win. That's how, that's how we win in life. So we're not going to stop fighting till we get what we want. And I also want to say that why do other schools get to play and we don't? Y'all are making plans to bring back school, and I don't understand how we can go, y'all are making plans to go back to school when we can't even have a sport, we can't play our sport, you know? I just want y'all to hear that, hear what I'm saying. Yeah, like, I don't get it, but thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Andy Ipinia.
Hello, friends, everyone. My name is Andy Ipinia. And I was, this is my senior year, and I would like to get a chance to, well, not only myself, but like all my other senior friends, the juniors, we would like to all get a chance to play football. One last time, this is the last ride. And of course, sports means a lot to everyone, especially La Jolla, this is a lot of, the only thing that a lot of people have here, a lot of students. And I'm sure they would all like to have a last chance, especially the seniors, the juniors, they can have a chance too. There's not really much to say, but we would all like to get a chance to play one last season. There's a lot of things, the last thing we, most of us have. You know, and it's very emotional for a lot of people, very emotional for me. My brother played football, I bought it, he injured his back and he didn't get to play. And I want to play my last season for him, you know? Now, I'm playing for my brother, and I'm sure a lot of other people have that. A lot of students here have that special song they play for. And, you know, but this, this means a lot to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. We'll proceed to Alfonso Carmona. Blanca, Blanca, Blanca. Can you make sure to raise the volume a little louder so we can hear?
Hello, my name is Alfonso Carmona, and I'm here as a supporter of the football team and as a performer. I'm part of the band and the dance team at what is in high school. And over the years, I have come to notice how football has become a big part of the school. It is part of the reason why many, why many of us push and push to become better students and keep our grades up for us to be able to get that feeling of being under the Friday night lights. And I know many of us will be willing to follow safety precautions for COVID-19 to get the chance to be under the Friday night lights again. And for us seniors, this might be our one and last chance to step onto that field for the last time ever again. And although some of us might be planning to study it in the future, many of them willing to play football in college. But for those of us that want to follow different careers and specialities, this is our last chance to step on that field. And the seniors would very much like it to get that chance to step onto that field for the very last time. Thank you.
Thank you. And next will be Mr. Rudy Olivares.
Good afternoon, guys. Thank you for inviting us, for all your meetings. We highly appreciate it. And I'd not just speak behalf of my son, but the whole fall sports athletes that want the chance to play at least for that last, one last season. This will be probably their last year being as a teenager. Next year, they'll be on the workforce. This is their last shot. I mean, some will go to college, some will not. They'll go into workforce, and we never know. And this is what the opportunity they want, you know? But it was just because we have the power, and we're not going to let them give that, give them that chance to play like everybody else. This has been, I mean, that's pretty a little bit unfair, not being equal as other schools have done. What have other schools have done that we can't do? We are La Jolla, we could do better than other schools. Why not try, you know? I'm pretty sure, I mean, we have a lot of people here that could overcome that. Now, is it fear that I see in your guys' eyes? I don't think so, but we got to try. Or, I mean, is that what we're going to hide behind that fear? I mean, yeah, it's a virus. Well, how many out there aim playing and doing everything what we're not doing? You know? So, give these guys a chance. All these boys and girls, athletes, give them a chance. One last chance, you know? They put in a lot of work. They never give up. They study, students first, like they say, and then athletes. And they go above and beyond, you know? For you guys, for themselves as well, like as they represent the district. Now it's time for you guys as a district to represent for them and go forward. It's time to step forward. We cannot go back in our homes and hide. We cannot be climbing into our, hiding under a rock. It's, you know, this thing, let's think outside the box. Let's think outside the box. What can we do? I mean, we have so many resources, and we're keeping them as prisoners in their homes? I mean, a lot of kids, stress, depression, you know, drop by dropping out because that's what they, they'll come in for, for sports. And all I ask on behalf of them, give them a chance. Be equal, equality. Give them a choice. Like those that you gave, the other kids that don't want to, you gave them a choice. But these kids, you're not being fair to them regardless where we at. I would just like to say thank you very much once again on behalf of all athletes for La Jolla ISD district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivares. We'll move on to discussion on district transition plan for on-campus instruction as required from TEA guidance.
We'll begin with Mr. José Luis Moren, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. We'll do the first part of the plan. It will be projected on the screen, but you also have a hard copy at your desks.
Good evening, everyone.
It's the black one that has the reopening, La Jolla ISD reopening plan.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Sainz mentioned, we're here to present the La Jolla ISD on-campus instruction transition plan. Just so you know, different assistants superintendents will be taking turns in presenting this information. The first question that we want to make sure we answer is, why are we starting on-campus instruction? As we know, TEA allows for school districts to restrict on-campus instruction for the first four weeks of the 2020-2021 instructional calendar. On August 12, 2020, the request to extend the start of the 2020-2021 school year transition beyond the four-week limit waiver was approved by our school board. Because of this waiver, we are required to begin on-campus instruction for students that come from households without internet access or appropriate remote learning devices. And at least some on-campus instruction must be provided each day. At this time, we have identified 1,463 students that do not have internet access in our school district. We're going to move on to the next slide, and Mrs. Villarreal, our Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Instruction, will talk to us about the students and the campuses they attend.
Thank you, Mr. Moren. So as you can see in that slide, we have identified 1,463, uh, students that have no infrastructure at their home, meaning that they have no Wi-Fi connectivity. They were given devices and they were given hotspots, however, they, they're not functioning because of where they live. And you could also see right there in that table that we've, uh, identified those campuses where those kids are coming from. I do want to let you all know and point out several campuses. For example, La Jolla High School has a total of 285 students that have no infrastructure at all. I also want to point out that Science Middle School has a total of 217 students. Then we also have Desavala Middle School that has a total of 107 students that have no, uh, infrastructure at all. Also, Stanford Dye, if you look at that campus in itself, uh, we have a total of 209. And then Tabasco with a total of 58. The reason I'm identifying those, um, campuses in particular is because, as you can tell, they're coming from Area 1. And, um, Area 1, for whatever reason, well, the reason is, is because of the area in itself. Sullivan City, we have that area where, uh, the Los Cebanos area, uh, where our kids in, that live in that area have no infrastructure, nothing that we've, that we've purchased, whether it's Verizon, whether it's T-Mobile, um, works in that particular area in itself. Over here by the Science, Pueblo de Palmas, we have also, whatever we've purchased is not functioning in those areas either. So, because we've identified those 1,463 students, uh, as a, as administration and with collaboration, one month our principals and also our reopening committee, what has been decided or what's being brought to you is, uh, that we're gonna be opening up these campuses so we could go ahead and provide instruction to these 1,463 students. If we move on to the next slide, you're able to, I'm gonna go ahead and explain to you all what are our kids and students, what are our students and teachers gonna do once we bring them in? Well, our students, once they're at the campus, they're gonna be able to, uh, work, get a device, obviously, on a computer. And then they're gonna be able to follow the same virtual schedule that we've, that we've provided for them. And they're gonna log in to their teacher, their current teacher of record, okay? We are gonna have a certified teacher there with them. And the certified teacher is also gonna log in and be able to teach her class. Let me explain that to you because it might be a little bit confusing. So, for example, if at Tabasco Elementary or Stanford Dye, for example, we identify, uh, out of the 200 and some kids, we identify maybe 30 third graders. We would want to get, uh, two third grade teachers to be able to work with those students right at the campus level, okay? And, um, those students would log in virtually, be following the teacher's schedule, uh, or their current schedule with a teacher of record. And then the teacher herself would be teaching her class as well. Now, what's the point of this? Well, when it comes to the asynchronous instruction, when they're working independently, the third grade teacher that's there with them can go ahead and work with them directly and be able to help them in a system while they're there, okay? Now, if needed, we would go ahead and add an assistant to be able to provide some additional support to the students and the teacher. That's the recommendation that we're providing at this point in time. If we look at the faces, there's three different faces that, uh, we have provided for you here. We have, starting on October 5th and going on to October 6th, the group of students that we would bring in would be those students that we've identified with no infrastructure. Now, I want to let you all know that becau- because we've identified 1,463 kids, that doesn't mean that those 1,463 kids are gonna actually be showing up. Let me explain why. Today I got a, a call from a principal and told me, Ms. Villarreal, out of my 58 kids, only 20 kids are gonna be showing up because the parent has decided to keep them at home. And that's the right of, of the parents, right? They're, they're deciding to keep them at home. So we would only be bringing in those 20 students, okay? I got another principal that said, I've got, uh, 200 students. And as of right now, only, out of the 200, only 11 students are showing up. Okay, because the, it, parents need to give us that consent. So I do want to share that information. And once we have all the complete numbers, we'll give you the, out of 1,463, how many kids are actually gonna, we're gonna be bringing in, okay? Uh, on the second bullet, it, it reads ACT testing for high school students. As you all know, our seniors, uh, we always test our seniors, give them the opportunity to go ahead and test with the ACT. And we went ahead and presented our protocols for testing purposes for our students, uh, to our crisis team. Those were, that was approved and our kids would be testing on October 6th. Okay, that's the first administration for ACTs, for our kids taking the ACT. And then also our stu-, our specialized students that have been referred for initial testing. Keep in mind that once the virus started back in, in March, the referral process for special ed continued. But we could not test because we needed to bring in kids into the campus. We could continue with services, providing services to our students, resource inclusion, speech therapy. But we cannot do the initial testing because it required bringing in students into the building. So we do have over a thousand students that we do need to go ahead and start testing. So that, that's the recommendation for Phase 1. Phase 2 would start on October 19th and run all the way to the 30th. And obviously, continue with our Phase 1 students. And then Phase, uh, the second population would be bringing in our self-contained specialized students. And also any students that have been identified by our campus principal's administration as, and as needing additional interventions or acceleration in grades, first grade through third grade based on our BOY assessment, okay? And then Phase 3, starting in November 2nd, we continue with our Phase 1 students, Phase 2 students, and then also students from parents requesting, uh, on-campus instruction. Okay? So, um, questions that you all might have in regards to the three phases?
I have a question, Ms. Villarreal. On the kids that we identified, the 1,400 and...
63.
63. Uh, those are, those are kids that are, they don't, they don't have access to the internet. Is, is that, is there any way there's, they could possibly be more kids in our district since our district, you know, 226 square miles? I know that the miles have issues, all of them has issues. But I know in some areas in Benita, in Palm Springs, there's also areas affected with, uh, hotspots, especially on, uh, I know that in La Jolla, North of La Jolla and stuff like that, they have an issue. The kids, would they be in this list, the kids that, that, uh, or how would you, how did you all go about identifying these kids?
I'm glad that you asked that question, Mr. Cantu, because the way we did it was, uh, we worked with transportation. As we have, as you know, we have 51 Wi-Fi buses. And those areas where our, you know, our buses were not having a good reception, right? Those were the areas that we concentrated on and my, uh, the executive directors and myself, we went out there, took all the devices that we had and we were, we worked and checked it out to see, did, you know, can we upload a, um, you know, a document up to Google classroom? Yes or no, with the Sprint, uh, the Sprint device? And if we couldn't, then we tried the Verizon. And then could, we couldn't, then we also tried the, the Sprint phone, then we tried the Verizon phone too. Then, uh, but however, to, to answer your question, uh, in speaking with some of our principals, uh, they are telling me, for example, uh, Casa Elementary, they're telling me that they have one street where they're having a lot of trouble, okay? And speaking with Ms., um, Ms. Trevino Sandoval over at Gonzales Elementary, she's telling me that she has a group of students as well, that it's not about the fact that they don't, um, that it's, that it's just that, that their work is saturated. It's that they're not, it's not working, it's that particular area. So, in, in doing this analysis, it, we, we probably did miss a couple of streets, but we are working on that and they would be more than welcome to come to on, on campus if the parents, you know, give us, give us permission to come. Yes, sir.
I guess you answered my next question because I was gonna say, if anybody has issues, can they just call in and roll their kids? I mean, bring, bring their kids here, the internet issues. I guess that you answered my question by saying that if the parent calls, I guess we, we would have to accommodate them as well, right? If they're having internet issues?
Well, at, at this point, it, it would be a selected group, which would be this group, but obviously, and we wouldn't deny anybody that is having any issues at this point in time. So obviously, we would work with our parents.
Thank you.
Ms. Villarreal, on, on, on those kids that are having those issues, aren't we taking the printed packages to them or are we still having kids that are not getting it, the instructional paper?
Okay, um, so just so you all know, Mr. Salinas, what we did at the beginning of the year, well, in, throughout, right before we started, we printed, uh, instructional packets for the whole semester. Uh, you know, in preparation of what if the crisis, this COVID-19 continues, you know, till May, or we don't know when we're gonna get a vaccine, we don't know what to expect. So CNI, uh, the executive directors, coordinators, we prepared for the whole semester and we gave out instructional packets to all students so they could go ahead and have those packets. And, and again, we, not only did we prepare for the whole semester, but we prepared for, you know, just different events. Let me give you an example. And those of you all that are in the crisis team know this. We were expecting the tropical storm this past weekend, right? So we didn't know where it was headed, but at first they thought that it was headed this way. So one of the things that we did was we spoke to our principals and said, you know, in preparation, just let's talk to our teachers and let them know that this assignment and this is, as assignment is due in case they can't log in, right? So they do have the packets, Mr. Salinas. These kids that, um, we've identified and what we've done is we're working with transportation. They're going on a daily basis and they're picking up the, the, uh, the packets or the assignment for the day. And then that way we could not count them absent and obviously to check their academics and their progress.
Thank you. I, I have one more question, Ms. Villarreal. On, on the teachers that are gonna come in, how are we gonna, are they gonna be on a volunteer basis or how is that gonna work?
Actually, Mr. Cantu, uh, later on in the presentation, and I don't want to take that away from Mr. Amunoz, we did provide a, a survey, a survey is out and we're gonna give you some more information regards to that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Villarreal. Thank you for the all of you.
What's the status on the towers?
Um, I, I, what I do want to say is, I believe this, not, not that I believe, I know that there's six towers are gonna be built. One of the recommendations that we gave was for the, the Sullivan Tower to actually be built in Los Cebanos area instead of the Pito area, that way we can help that population. But it is my understanding that we have not started on the towers, but once they do, it will take a month to finish. Mr. Villarreal, if you want to answer that question, if you have more information regards to that? One of the things that I do want to add though is that in talking with Verizon, that's who we, uh, purchased the hotspots with, uh, they will be adding two additional, uh, towers that I want to, I, I don't want to use the word towers, but I could go ahead and check on my phone to see, to get the appropriate word, um, within our area. That way connectivity could be a lot better, uh, that, that just happened today. So I don't know how long that will take, but they are gonna be adding that within our area since we did invest, uh, with those 10,000 hotspots with Verizon.
Ms. Villarreal, for those students you mentioned, like you said, there was 201 and only 11 would report coming back. What are we gonna do with the other, with those others? Are we gonna continue to give packets or that's accepted?
That, that is correct. That is, that is allowed, uh, instructional packets are allowed. But not only that, Ms. Cantu, um, one of the things that we've talked to our teachers about and, uh, and that's why we keep saying that teachers have it very tough right now. Because if you're a teacher that, um, that you have MAGDA as part of your roster, but MAGDA is a paper packet student, but then, and you also have, uh, Mr. Villarreal as well as a paper packet and the rest are virtual. Well, the responsibility of the teacher is also Mr. Villarreal and MAGDA because she needs to make sure that, one, that we collect the work, check the work, but makes contact because how am I supposed to learn about fractions if you never did the initial teach, right? So contact needs to be made with the, with MAGDA and with RIT through the phone. And then that way they could be some kind of instruction. So it is a very difficult situation that our, uh, teachers are in. And as a CNI team, we are gonna continue to try to support as much as possible our teachers and educators because they do have it very, very tough right now.
It's tough online, learning online as it is.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is now. It's, 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 it's new for everyone. We, we've had to, basically, every single, uh, district in the state and the nation have gone through a transformation. I just want to say that I'm very proud of our district because our teachers are doing a very, very good job and with the support of our principals.
Thank you. And you mentioned the ACT testing for high school students. Have you all discussed the TSI testing?
Absolutely, ma'am. Uh, we have a, the TSI protocol that I need to review with the crisis team. Our high school principals want to go ahead and start already, uh, providing that as well. Because our, uh, the new TSI test is just around, it's about to change, uh, to a new TSI test. So we want to make sure that we concentrate on the students that did not pass. For example, it's the reading and math before, it's, it's leading math together. So the students who did not pass the writing, we need to focus on those students and make sure that we get them to pass the writing because the TSI test is gonna be very different. So, uh, we've identified our population, so we just need to make sure that I review the protocol with the crisis team to get it approved. So I'm sure that we're gonna start testing soon, so. Anything else?
Well, just so we understand, so these kids that are gonna be reporting because they don't have connectivity, they're still gonna be online, just on campus, or they're gonna have on-campus instruction?
Well, the goal is for them to have during their asynchronous time, they have their teacher, they'll be able to provide that instruction, uh, face-to-face when it's asynchronous time.
Which is like independent, when they're independent, they're working? But there won't be any instruction as far as that the child will still be online on a computer?
Correct. The, the, if, if, when they go in and I'm scheduled to do my language charts for 45 minutes, then I'm logging in into my device for 45 minutes with my teacher record. And then for the next 45 minutes, I'm scheduled, for example, to do, uh, you know, asynchronous time, right? Which is my independent practice, then I, I would have to go ahead and then the teacher would be able to help. That's why matching the teacher with the grade level is very, very important, that we can make sure that they're following the same schedule.
And the 10, 15 students in that classroom will be the same grade level?
Correct. That's what it's gonna, that's, that's our goal, Ms. Cantu, to be able to do that and that's how it will work perfectly.
But actual on-campus instruction is not set to maybe November 2nd, like when the teacher would actually be teaching?
On-campus instruction actually starts on, with, for the 1,463, that actually starts on October 5th.
Okay.
And would it change when and if Texas Education Agency, gives us some type of updated guidelines tomorrow afternoon?
If, uh, whenever we get any new guidelines or, uh, you know, or guidance, then obviously we would look at this and if we need to make changes, we would make changes.
And I guess the biggest question is, why is it that we keep on changing the reopening plan? So when they ask you that, what is it that you are giving back as, as an answer?
So for example, yesterday when we met with our district reopening committee, So for example, yesterday when we met with our district reopening committee, which involved teachers and principals, one of the things that we started off with was um with with Mr. Moore, um, Moryn, excuse me, started off with and the explanation of after the first four weeks of of virtual instruction, starting the fifth week, we uh TA requires districts to bring in a selected group of students and to start facing in the rest of the students, right, and give them the, give parents that opportunity. And it's also um question six from our um, the frequently asked question for under enrollment, page eight. Um, so so we do provide that information to our committees and to our teachers or anybody that asks as to the why, why are we doing this, right? Um, and again, it's all based on TA guidance and regulations, and when things change, obviously, we need to adhere to that and make sure that we make changes as well.
Uh, let me, let me just add that in a meeting with the Commissioner Morath yesterday and Hidalgo County Superintendents, there is a possibility that tomorrow they will announce, TA will announce that certain counties in the state, Hidalgo being one of them, uh, based on the percent of hospitalizations in the county due to COVID nineteen, we might be allowed to add another four-week extension. Just like the board voted for the second four weeks, we might be allowed to ask for another four weeks. However, the requirements that would be in place for week five, which is this phase one, that would not change. The commissioner made that clear. That even though we are allowed another four weeks to continue to phase in, we would still be expected to do, to bring in a group on our fifth week. So this part, even if they give us a, an extension, this part has to stay the same.
I I just have maybe a, maybe it's not a question, a recommendation. Have we, have we looked into maybe using uh Channel seventeen as a resource for instructional, you know, videos or something like that where the kids are can access, or maybe uh YouTube, because everybody can access YouTube? Maybe, you know, maybe to help out the kids a little bit more when it comes to instruction, instruction?
That's a good recommendation, Mr. Cantu, and we'll uh, I'll make sure that I jot that down and work with Ms. Cantu, Blanca Cantu, because um uh our teachers have developed instructional videos for every single grade level, for every single week in case our our students need additional support on whatever skill is being taught that week. Uh, or if the parent needs additional support, right? Um, and and because it's 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 a, it's a fact, we're working together as a team, you know, teacher, student, and parent. Um, and we know that that was a need last year, and so we've developed those videos. Um, and so those are available, so we could be showing those through Channel seventeen.
And I know, it's because I know the challenges that you all have faced and everything changes on a daily basis, and like you said, we're in this together. And we're just, you know, trying to, trying to see how we can facilitate a little bit more for our students or staff. Because it's 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 hard, and I I mean, we, I think all of the board members here have had, you know, a couple of complaints here and there. And we're just, you know, trying to see how we can, you know, it can be more accessible or it needs facilitated a little bit more because it's stressing, you know, having kids at home and having to teach and having to do all that stuff. But I, you know, you all are doing amazing things and I applaud you for all that.
Well, thank you. Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Cantu. Next, we do have, are there any other questions? If not, that way we do have this uh, Mr. Hoyt?
Hello, can we move on to the next page, uh labeled personal protective equipment? Uh, let's just let you know, to inform you that the PPE equipment, like as far as uh sneeze bars, have been delivered to all campuses and installed by the custodial department. The thermometers had also been delivered to every campus. It is uh my uh, the nurses were trained on how, they trained the staff on how to use the thermometers and so forth. Uh, face masks and face shields have been delivered to all campuses for every employee. Uh, students, uh PPE will be delivered by Wednesday, September thirtieth. Uh, we had not delivered those because of this is, there were no students on campus, but now that we are starting to bring that student, we would uh start delivering those, and they will be done by September thirtieth. There, we will be providing face masks for students in all grade levels. Uh, face shields for pre-K through first, it was recommended that uh the younger students needed a face shield so that uh, I guess when the instructions going on, they would be able to see their uh movements, mouth movements, so forth. Okay, uh, safety posters, labels, signs, all all those have been provided to the campuses, and if you visit some of the campuses, they have some of them on the outside, they've already placed the six feet apart uh at your entrance in some of the hallways, so that students are reminded to maintain the the safety, the the space between themselves. Okay? Any questions?
Are your thermometers touchless?
Uh, no, ma'am, they're like the ones that we're using in the entrance, ma'am.
Have you inquired into, looking into a thermometer where students can just walk in?
Uh, we are looking, currently looking into uh, providing some of them for the high school. And uh, Mr. Villarreal is, will provide some additional information on that.
I know I've seen some that that jot down your temperature and stuff like, makes it easier because it it stores uh, and it's it's very hard for staff to be, you know, going at age child and documenting it's uh.
And we we consider them for the high schools because I mean, they have a large number of students, so those were the ones that we're looking at, especially some that are not uh, uh, the ones that are basically touchless, like I think there's some that you could just scan your ribs, and you don't have to get close to them, but something that we're looking at to avoid that uh, you know, somebody gets close to them, then they'll be concerned with that. Any other questions? If not, we'll proceed with the, the Moryn.
As part of the presentation, we also wanted to include the sections of the student uh procedures and protocols that we have in place, section that we wanted to highlight to make sure that our parents and students know that we uh, we do have procedures to keep them safe when they return to on-campus instruction. So the first one that we wanna review is the student campus arrival procedures. And with these procedures, uh, the campuses will designate an area for parent regarding drop-off. The campuses will assign personnel to conduct uh forehead temperature checks and ask the screen questions uh for, to determine if the student has symptoms of COVID nineteen or they have been exposed to someone with COVID nineteen. And of course, anyone who has been exposed to someone with COVID nineteen or has symptoms will not be allowed into any district building or facility. So those students will not be allowed, and also the the personnel will make sure that the students are wearing their face masks or face shield as required by the school district. Also, we have the student procedures. Once the students are on campus, these are some of the things that they're they're required to follow, these guidelines. Students shall wear face masks or face coverings, and the district will provide the reusable masks. Students shall maintain social distancing of at least six feet from one another, and we also have our the stickers on the floor to remind students of this, these procedures. Students shall wash their hands and or use hand sanitizer through throughout their time in the building. And students shall not shake hands, touch, or hug others while in school. Also, under student procedures and protocols, if the students develop symptoms or become sick during the school day, these are the things that they're supposed to do. They're supposed to immediately separate themselves from their peers and notify their teacher. The teacher will send a student to a designated isolation room, and then the nurse will notify the parents to pick up the students and to make sure that they they contact their medical provider. And students will not be able to return to school or enter into any district building or facility until they have been cleared by the, by the school nurse. As I mentioned, these are sections of our procedures and protocols that we have in place. On our website, we do have the complete reopening plan, which includes all the re, the procedures and protocols for students and staff. Any questions?
Mr. Moryn, I know you mentioned uh pre-K through first grade are gonna be requiring face shields in your discussion with your committee. Have you all discussed how you're going to school and how often will you be sanitizing those face shields?
We, we haven't discussed that on uh, on the committee, but that's something that we are going to discuss to make sure that we make sure that the students do get those uh face shields effective throughout the school day.
Thank you.
If there, there's some more questions, Mr. Ricardo, I will continue with the next part of the.
Good evening, distinguished board members, Madam President, Dr. Science. Uh, the next slide uh will uh in, involve the transportation phase. Uh, so the La Jolla Independent Transportation Department will implement the following. Uh, we will pick up and drop off identified students at their campuses. Our buses are already equipped with hand sanitizer dispensers. All students will be required to sanitize their hands upon boarding the buses. Uh, students will be screened for temperature and symptoms as they board the bus. Students that exhibit COVID nineteen symptoms or have a temperature of one hundred point four, one hundred, excuse me, point four will not be allowed on the bus. Uh, students will be seated in accordance with the recommended CDC facial distancing guidelines, and we have a chart for every bus on this one. Uh, parents of elementary students will be asked to wait with their children at the bus pickup area in case we have uh an issue with the student, the temperature. Parents are also uh going to be encouraged to drop off and pick up their children at school to help minimize uh uh the burden on the transportation department. Uh, the next slide, are there any questions?
Mr. Villarreal, who will be screening the students as they're entering the bus? The bus driver?
Bus driver, and we're working on a plan to have an aide as well, or another bus driver, so correct, yes.
We're working on an aide, I'm sorry.
Possibly a bus aide and or a another bus driver or.
Or it might be two bus drivers, since we're gonna have limited routes. So we are working to have two people on every bus.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, any other questions?
You, you're saying, do you have posters uh that they ordered for the campuses or?
Posters for the campuses?
Yeah, to to display across around the campus.
Yes.
On social distancing.
Correct. Uh, we are collaborating with Human Resources and Operations. Human Resources is putting the signage on the buildings. Operations is putting signage, uh yard signs at the entrance of the building and on the fences uh depicting the social distancing guidelines, wearing the face mask, according to the front office for a a temperature screening. Uh, so we kept it very simple for the visitors and employees. It's a three-step process, right, on on the signage. So you'll be seeing the signs are gonna be, the ones that we're installing are four-by-fours, and they're banners pretty much on the, on the buildings, on the outside.
So the district is providing our campuses
Correct.
printed posters. They're not creating any on their own?
No.
As reminders?
No, we're trying, we're not trying, we need to be consistent across the board so that all the message can be the same across the district. And that's, that is uh what we decided to do, and we feel that that's what's in the best district, best interest of all of us. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And by the way, signage will be on the buses as well, alright? So that there will be signages on the doors of the buses as well, and there'll be a seating chart on the bus as well for our students, and a seating chart. Good question. Uh, Child Nutrition Department, uh, La Jolla ISD, uh CNS Department will continue to provide free breakfast, lunch, and supper meal services at twenty-nine of our campuses through our curbside meal program. So curbside meal program is when the parents go pick up the, the meal at the campus, twenty-nine locations. Uh, next bullet, meals will be served every Monday and Thursday, they have been for the last two weeks, from two PM to six PM. Uh, nine uh La Jolla ISD buses will deliver meals to students in twenty-seven designated locations throughout the district. An LJ ISD meal card is required for meal distribution uh to students. So parents need to, uh, we are following the national guideline, and we need to uh, without the card, parents cannot pick up meals. Uh, we also uh make copies for all parents. As a, a good collaborative effort between uh our business and department and the operations and our child nutrition department. In the, so this is for parents that are right now at home doing uh uh doing their online work at home. For in-class instruction, uh, on or after October fifth, meals will be served to our students in their respective classrooms. And then, of course, uh, following CDC and TDA guidelines for meal purpose distribution. Meal distribution purposes. Any questions on the child nutrition? Okay, on to Custodial Services Department. Uh, La Jolla Independent School District Custodial Department will increase the level of frequency in which touch points and surfaces are cleaned, disinfected, and sanitized in all district buildings by. And we kept it very simple for our staff and for our students. A bullet number one, we'll do this by implementing a checklist and log to monitor the frequency of cleaning in restrooms, classrooms, hallways, and any other high-traffic, high-touch areas at the campus. We will also uh ensure sanitation by installing hand sanitizing dispensers at the main entrances of every campus and throughout the buildings. Uh, we will also ensure that hand sanitizing pumps are available to every classroom in every building. So our custodial department, along with our finance department, uh, with the blessing from Dr. Science and the Crisis COVID Crisis Committee, allowed for this for the, for the, for the safety and protection uh of every, not only employee, but more so the our students. Our fourth, on the fourth bullet, we will also initiate and implement an immediate deep cleaning, disinfecting, and sanitizing process for any building area that may have been occupied by a person who was confirmed COVID nineteen positive. And we have, we've had several of these cases already. And uh, our custodial department has a team that is uh, that is trained and is ready to to meet the needs of of any campus if there is in fact a person that's positive for COVID nineteen. And our final bullet, we will also ensure that all products used to disinfect and sanitize are CDC and PPA approved, which is very important.
It would be nice if each campus and each department would have their own sanitizing um equipment. Like one of those guns that they use would be ideal uh to train the custodian.
Good question, good point.
And then it would be an immediate response.
Yes, ma'am. The transportation department ordered twelve. Our custodial department currently has nine of those uh uh miss machines. And we have two, we call, call them blasters. These, whenever there is a a case, not only for COVID, we've had them for two years, these big blasters that are connected to the main unit of the whole building, and within hours, the entire building is sanitized and disinfected.
It would be nice for it to come from the district to support our campuses and departments because our budget's already been cut, you know, and that would be something that we could support. I know, Mr. Trevino, you're looking at me, uh, but it is a need, and you know, I've been on on this topic, but at least, at least one per campus to to support, you know?
Uh, a point taken, and we will uh, we will go ahead and look into the cost and uh, and not only the cost, but what we can get, and as soon as we can get them, uh, we'll look into it, ma'am, get you, get, get you and not only you, but get our kids uh one at one per building. Take that into consideration, work on. Any other questions on the first part of custodial? Have our fine, my, my, this is page twelve, not numbered, but the last part of the second section, Custodial Services Department. La Jolla Independent School District Custodial Department will ensure the safety of all members of the learning community by uh installing protective plexiglass shields at reception areas to minimize exposure. Uh, installing portable plexiglass guards in every classroom at every La Jolla ISD building, and when we talk about the plexiglass, I mean, I believe Mr. Trevino had mentioned that we bought twenty thousand uh plexiglass, like portable plexiglass for students, and we have ordered uh, I believe, another seven thousand, four thousand? Seven thousand? 7,000 for, to hit 100% for our students, for their safety. On the third bullet, every custodian has been equipped with our PPE, including face mask, face shield, gloves, which will obviously minimize their exposure because we are asking, we are asking them to do a very big task. And we appreciate our custodial department. And finally, six-foot spatial distancing signage will be placed at all campuses to ensure CDC recommendations are followed by all members of the learning community. And we just ordered another 1,500 six-foot spatial distance sign, signs for our campuses just last week as well. Any other questions in our, or recommendations for the custodial and our operations department? And again, this plan is, is subject to change based on the needs of our students and staff. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My part is to present on how we're gonna be staff, how we're gonna staff the spacing process. So the question that we're gonna answer is, which staff members are gonna be called in to work? So, and the response to that is campus principals. We'll bring, bringing in however many staff members, they will need to safeguard the safety and well-being of our students, staff, and the community. Of course, the number will have to increase as we progress from phase one to phase three. Nonetheless, the essential employees that will be called in from the onset will be our campus administration, our nurses, all our variance, our campus computer proctors, our district computer technicians, law enforcement, security personnel. And if we require sort of our teachers, we will be looking into that volunteer pool of teachers that are volunteering to come in and do the in-person instruction. Now, all employees, they have concerns about returning, are being encouraged to speak to their supervisors and to human resources so that we can try to reasonably accommodate and mitigate any concerns that they might have. Now, what are we gonna do to keep our employees safe? We will be implementing and following our district's employee and campus safety protocols. We have surveyed our staff. We currently have close to 2,000 teachers. I think the number as of the beginning of September was 1,934. Out of those 1,934, as of noon this, this today, we had 1,803 responses. Out of those 1,803 responses, 429 teachers that signed up to volunteer to come in, in the event that the principals needed them to provide support. Any questions in regards, so we're gonna staff our face-in process?
I just have a question. How are we gonna, how are, are we gonna screen everybody that comes into every school?
Yes, Mr. Cantu, we do have the campus safety protocol, we have the employee safety protocols, then from the very beginning, from the very onset, we are encouraging all our employees to screen themselves before they report to work, take their own temperature, go through the checklist. In the, in the event that they do come into work, at the employee entrance, we will have, we will staff an employee there, preferably might be the nurse, that will be screening our employees, taking their temperature, asking the screening questions to see if they have any of the symptoms, or they've been in close contact with somebody that has been not confirmed or had been showing symptoms. If, and at any point the employee answers yes to any of those questions, they will not be allowed to come in, right? In the event that they came in and were working, but if at any point of the day they start feeling those symptoms, we are also directing them to leave the building as soon as possible, notify their supervisor and risk management office so that we can provide them support.
Thank you.
The 15% that you receive feedback for in-person instruction, are you looking more at elementary teachers or secondary teachers that are apt to come in person?
As it is right now, Ms. Ochoa, most part it is our elementary staff that are saying that they wanna come in and commendations to them. We're very grateful to the fact that they recognize a need that our students are facing, that our community are facing, and they do wanna come in because, again, they're concerned that, that our students are falling behind. They wanna close that COVID slide that I guess initiated back in March. But following the guidance and depending on what we hear tomorrow, right from TA, we'll be making adjustments as those, the latest information comes in.
And are we gonna have any type of incentives for them?
As it is right now, Ms. Ochoa, nothing is planned. And again, commendations to these teachers because, again, knowing that, that those offers were not on the table, they were still volunteering to come in.
Right.
Nonetheless, we, not to say that other teachers that are working virtually shouldn't be commended as well, because as you've heard before and as you've heard from our community, it is very stressful. Our teachers did not sign up to be at-home teachers and they're learning, right? It's a transitional process and commendations to them because we're hearing great things from their parents, we're hearing great things from our students and from the community that our teachers are doing an outstanding job with virtual instruction.
Yes, they are. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to thank each of the assistant superintendents that has taken the lead in planning each of the parts of this transition plan, as well as the district crisis committee, as well as the reopening committee. So thank you to all of those individuals that have worked on this plan. And I just wanna point out, as Mr. Maureen talked about, that the protocols here are summarized. There are much more details to most of these that are in the actual district reopening plan, but the assistant superintendent summarized the protocols here so that you could get an idea of what the safety procedures will look like. Are there any other questions or comments from our Board of Trustees?
Is that information on our website if a parent wanted to receive the details?
Yes, it's posted, as soon as you go into our website, it's one of the biggest banner. It says district reopening plan. And that plan has been on our website, I think probably since about, I wanna say maybe June, but it has been updated as we get new recommendations from the Texas Education Agency or the CDC. It has always been updated.
It's been a huge undertaking and I just wanna say that we're, we're very grateful to everybody that's taken part in putting it together. We understand that it's, it's not an easy task and it's not something that you all have any background in as far as COVID is concerned. And we understand it's been, I mean, very time-consuming and yours part and everything that I had learned today, I mean, as far as some of the new procedures that are in place and things that you all have planned for our reopening, I'm very excited. In fact, I think that La Jolla ISD would be very well-prepared on its side.
Thank you, Mr. Garza.
We'll move on to discussion on extracurricular activities.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. To begin this discussion, I would like to give the Board of Trustees and audience a summary of some of the meetings and requests that we have had from certain parents in our district. And so I'll start off by saying that on Monday, September 21st, district staff met with eight parents who were here and their request was that we reconsider the discussion or the decision on extracurricular activities. Some of the statements and the reasons that the parents gave were that for some students, school activities are the only activities that they participate in. And I think some of our speakers today talked about that also. And they also talked about how coaches are good role models for students and that especially now during this time that students are in need of positive role models. They also talked about that for many students, extracurricular activities prevent them from dropping out of school and I think some of our guests also spoke about that. And I do wanna say that we agree with parents and with students about all of these things. We do know that we have an outstanding athletic and fine arts program, as well as all programs in our district, and our staff are good role models for our students and so we do appreciate our parents acknowledging that and we agree with them. On Monday also, in the afternoon, district administration met with campus administrators, including principals and athletic coordinators from each of the high schools. Some of the factors and the purpose of the meeting was to consider the request that was made by the parents. Some of the factors that were talked about at that meeting were the high positivity rate of COVID-19 in our area, specifically Hidalgo County. Currently, Hidalgo County has an 18% positivity rate compared to lower rates in the state. I don't have the current one, but as of 9/11, the state positivity rate was 12.02 and the national positivity rate was 8.0. Other factors that were discussed at the meeting were the governor's executive order in Quichidago County was identified as a trauma service area with high COVID-19 hospitalizations. These are areas where for the last seven days, 15% or more of the hospitalizations are due to COVID-19. Also discussed was the fact that our district continues to provide remote instruction for our students because that is the safest place for students. We talked about the fact that there would be a danger of infection, not only for students and their families, but also for coaching staff, bus drivers, custodians, and other campus and district staff that would need to be asked to work at games and practices. Also discussed was allowing that, allowing for one specific activity or group of students, such as, for example, football, may obligate us to require participation in other activities such as cheerleading, drill teams, mariachi, and so on. Other statements that were made by the staff at this meeting was that they acknowledged that we have always put students first and that this decision continues to do that by putting their safety first. Also that we do want students to participate, but not at the cost of risking the health and lives of family and community. And another statement that was made is, if we would not let our own children participate, we are not going to advocate for participation of other students either. Also discussed were the side effects or after-effects of COVID-19, especially on children, and symptoms such as inflammation of certain organs that are not widely known yet. So based on these factors, the campus and district administration recommends that we keep the district's original decision to suspend extracurricular activities at this time. I would also like to give some information from a September 9th meeting that Hidalgo County Superintendent's had with Hidalgo County officials. At this meeting, superintendents were urged to not, to not have students participate in extracurricular activities. A statement that was made from Dr. Melendez and he did say that superintendents had permission to quote him on this, it was that if school districts do not have fall activities, 20 or 30 lives in the community could be saved. He also went on to say that in Hidalgo County, one of every 10 households in our county has multi-generational families living in the household and this poses a greater possibility of older citizens in our community becoming infected. He also talked about Hidalgo County having one of the highest mortality rates in the state. On that day, on September 9th, it was at 4%. County officials also spoke about the different groups that would be included that might possibly become infected, such as coaches, bus drivers, custodians, and visitors to our games. I would like to say that since then, this week, it was announced that pigskin marching contest will not be held in the Rio Grande Valley. It has been canceled and I would like to add that this is the first time that pigskin jubilee has been canceled since 1943 and that was during World War II or because of World War II. And this year it has been canceled. And then the last thing I wanna say is that La Jolla ISD has always provided many opportunities and we pride ourselves in all of the opportunities that we provide our students to participate in athletics, in fine arts, in academic UIL, and many other clubs and organizations. And we want to continue to do that. This is still our goal for all students and we want to continue to provide them when it is safe to do so. So with that, I'll open the floor for any discussion or questions that the board may have of any of our staff members. Before we do that, I just wanna call your attention to other material that you were giving. One of the booklets that you have is the summer strength and conditioning. I do want to thank our athletic department because they, they did develop a plan and we do have a summer strength and conditioning plan. And then also other informations on protocols that have been developed by the athletic department. And along with that, because one of the questions that we were asked by one of our parents in the meetings and it's attached to this athletic department booklet that you have, they wanted to know of all of the high schools in Texas that are currently playing, how many games have been canceled? And so you have a list of that. And I thought there was another document, oh, we just provided for you a timeline of the activities and other important events in this consideration. And it's, it's a document called La Jolla ISD Extracurricular Activities 202021 Decision Timeline. So, but you can see the different activities that have influenced our decision in the district and out of the district events. So you have that data with you also.
Doc, obviously, October 5th or the extension of the four weeks, Mr. Villarreal, you're gonna have to get up. We're officially looking into phase one, phase two, and phase three, so eventually the kids will end up coming in person. Correct? Because that's what the state's pushing for, correct? Okay, so, everything that you said, Doc, I totally agree and I'm, I'm one of the persons that, that, that is always just looking out for the welfare, safety, and security of our students, but what we heard here today, what we all heard here today, we, we, we heard our students, we heard our students, that they felt emotional. I even saw Mrs. Cantu turn back and look at me and, and see what we were seeing on their faces. And, and this board, and the board that I served in 2012, have always urged and we've pushed our administration to invest in those that invest in our students. And, and we've done that and they've done that and we've always done that. But if it's gonna come down to a couple of weeks or a couple of days, and, and just, I just found out this today with Mr. Garza that, you know, so he, I know the Mr. Garza and Mr. Cantu used to coach, and I know that McCallum, he had mentioned something, I don't know if Ms. Cantu was there, that McCallum's willing to wait. And then I know that out there, like I said, safety, security, and welfare to our students has always been the first. This logo here, the jewel is our students. And if you have our students speaking their hearts out and those seniors that wanna walk into the field and wanna march for the last time, well, yeah, we've always taken into consideration the safety and the security. But we've always asked for our administration and this board and the previous board have always pushed to invest in those that invest in our students. And if there is an action plan that can be taken through our health department and everything that all these people have worked for, because this is just great work that you all have done. I mean, you've heard it from all of our board members that everything's in plan and I know that maybe some of the staff, some of the coaches might feel pressured to go there, but at the end of the day, if this jewel is not what we're, if this is not the jewel that we're here to service, then, then we need to really consider something else. Because what we heard today was them speaking their heart out. That doesn't change the fact that every time I heard something, I always went back and I said, what is this happening? What is that happening? You know? Coach, I mean, football has actually helped us fight the fight. And if eventually, we're gonna come into school in a couple of weeks. And if eventually we're gonna come into school in a couple of weeks, and why should we deprive our kids for a couple of weeks, and then we have Mrs. Yarreal, Mr. Munoz, and Mr. Trevino, and Mr. Maureen, and Mr. Villarreal, Dr. Science, and everyone that has helped. I don't wanna leave anybody out. And I think that if we continue to work something like this, guys, then all I say is that we need to invest in our kids and find a way to do it. And if there is something that can't be done, then we're willing to work with it and stop it. But right now, I mean, it's hard to see it, and I know that we can't be making everybody out there happy. And not every decision that we make is gonna fit every household. But if the parents don't want their kids to participate, they have that option, well, then give them that option. But if we have parents that have kids that want the option to participate, and hopefully that we can work these plans that we have it through the CDC and through Hidalgo County Health Department, and if there is a plan of action, then then I think that right now, I mean, we should really consider. I know that this item is on for tomorrow. Am I correct? Yes?
What? The transitioning plan is on for tomorrow.
Okay, but not not for the extracurricular.
But the fall sports? No, no, that one is not on for tomorrow.
Okay, but then we can always come. We can always come back if if the majority of the board decides. This is just me throwing my my two cents out there, but it felt bad. It really felt it felt like we were depriving our kids, especially when I find out that it was Benbol, Rioondo, and ourselves. I mean, La Jolla is a place to be. I mean, I I thought that there were some more districts out there that that weren't participating. So just remember that the little jewel here is why we are here. And at the end of the day, I do look into save the safety, the security, and the welfare of our students and our staff, because we've always invested in everything, in our benefits, in our Cadillac plan for the insurance. But we really need to think about this and really find it in our hearts to try to see if we can accommodate for these kids. Because at the end of the day, these kids, people think that the board manda, or the superintendent manda, or the principal manda, no manda, mandan los estudiantes. Porque si los estudiantes no vienen al distrito escolar de La Jolla, nobody has a job, and none of us sit here where we're at. So at the end of the day, for those that are considering the safety and care for your families, I respect that. Maybe somebody else that's that's willing to do it, and and what would happen to those employees that that don't wanna do it because of their safety, I would expect that we respect that. And I think that we we do a plan for them specially, and hopefully very soon a vaccine can be taken out and cure this pandemic that's killed not only just the way of life, but everything that happens. We've lost life, I mean, we've lost loved ones and everything. But at the end, the jewels of the valley is one of La Jolla. And we need to look at that, and we need to consider our parents, consider our students, consider our staff, but invest in every way, not just not just on employees, but on our students and on our parents. And this is just me with the safety, with the precautions, with the protocols, with Hidalgo County Health Department, with whatever the CDC says. But come on, ya no más queda Rioondo and Benbol y nosotros. Let's really think about that, and let's let's see the leadership that we saw today with our kids here, how they led and how they put us in this situation, because it felt bad. It really felt bad. As long as we do things right, I'm willing to help out our students, but it has to be all of us together. But just like we've invested in our in our staff, it's time that we come back, and we always invest in our students, but let's invest and find a way that we can have these kids be happy and finish off their senior years and do what they love to do. Thank you.
Mr. Salinas, thank you for your comments. I do want to say, though, that the coordinators that are here have said that while they support any decision that the district makes, that they will coach if they're asked to coach, and I just wanted to say that on their behalf.
And thank you to the coaches.
Do you think we can hear from some of our coordinators? I know that, and you know, this is a situation that we, it's unfortunate, but we're facing. And Coach is right, you know, you listen to the kids, and they kind of, you know, choke you up. You know, we've played sports before, and it really impacts your life, you know. And I just I just fear for the safety of everyone. And I know we've all, not everybody here, but I know that somehow we've been affected by this. We've had loved ones pass away, and I just wanna hear, because it's gonna affect all of us. I just wanna hear any mini, any comments or anything that you all might have, because if we open up football, the the fall sports, you you're looking into what about bands? What about drill team? What about cheerleaders? You know, it's 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 just not football in itself. It's 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 everything else. You have people going, you have kids fighting for scholarships for band, you know. So I would really like for some of our staff, if you all, you know, to, you know, give us a little bit of what you feel, and if moving forward, how would you approach this, or what are your thoughts? If we do actually go into and approve that the fall sports, you know, we bring back fall sports.
I I wanna say that before you all do give your comments, and I do believe it's something that I think would benefit us all as a community is hearing from you all. I do wanna make sure that it's very clear that us as a board, we respect the decision that you all have made and the stance that you've taken. I mean, we've been in those positions before as an educator, myself as a coach as well. I mean, our main job was to to teach our kids, to teach them, prepare them, but more than anything, it was to protect them. And so we understand when you all say, and you give the recommendation, hey, we're scared. We're scared not for ourselves, maybe so for ourselves and our family, but more so for the kids that we've been entrusted with. And I understand that I've been put in that situation, and I know everybody here on this board has been torn. I mean, we're torn with the decision that we are a district of opportunity and choices, and we wanna give that opportunity and choices. And if we don't give that opportunity, it's not because it's not something we don't want to, because we wanna put in the work behind it. The reason we don't wanna do it is because we wanna make sure that we're doing what's best for our kids and that they're they're safe in that manner. And and we understand that the time and effort that they put in, and we don't devalue that one bit, not at all. I mean, we we just want to make sure that we stand by who we are, and like Coach Salinas said, we've always been a district that's supported kids, given the opportunities, and been there. So I'm not saying that I think that any, by any means, anybody here has has decided one way or another, or we we say that whatever we decide is right. No, that's not the case. I don't know if there's a right answer. Right now, what we wanna do is we just wanna make sure that our community knows that we're listening to them. Our staff knows that we listen to them. We value what you're saying, because I mean, it's not, because I know that none of you all wanna put in the work. We all know it's because you all wanna make sure that our kids are are our priority and they're safe. And I hope our community understands that the decision was made, was out of abundance of caution when it was made, because we feared for our kids, and we still feel for them. With that being that the rest of the schools in in our district have decided to play, and then, you know, that's making us reconsider. And maybe with some more input of our staff and our administration here, I mean, it it'll make the decision for us a little easier. So with that being said, I mean, we are listening. We're listening. All of us are.
I just I just want the staff to know that 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 I do look at at the fact of the risks, because Dr. Science can be my voice on always just saying we should be careful and let's not have meetings in person. But when we're one of the last districts or the second district in in this area, and our kids are coming to us, and we wait a week or two more, like Mr. Garza said, I mean, they're gonna lose out on the conditioning, and then even three or four weeks after that, everybody has to come back on the phases that Mrs. Villarreal explained. I mean, we're talking just about a couple of weeks, you know. So of course, safety, security, and welfare for all, I mean, students and staff. But this is just a different ballgame now, because we have our kids coming very emotional and pleading for what they want and what they love. So again, safety for everyone. Thanks.
I wanna echo what other board members are saying. I respect our athletes, and I I know they were very passionate, and it took a lot, a lot for them to come in and speak their minds and stand up for what they want, right? I I respect them. But I have some questions, Dr. Science. You have a committee, especially specifically for this, right?
The athletic protocols that you're seeing were done by the athletic department staff.
Okay.
Is that?
Yes.
Yes.
And their recommendation is, or their opinion is?
Well.
I mean, basically is?
I I can talk about the participants that were in the meeting that we had on Monday that I just described. And that committee, which was, I think, most of us that are sitting in this room, and the recommendation was that we continue to suspend until I think it was November second, and and then look at data from there. So that was that was that that group of people, which is us sitting here.
That's not the committee that included the parents, because you said there was another committee?
No, those of us that met with the parents were myself, Ms. Villarreal, Mr. Maureen. I think Chief was there for most of the meetings. We're the ones that met with the parents.
Well, it's very easy for me to say I wanna support, and I do, I support your students a hundred percent. I also have to support administration, and so I'm here to say that I, you know, I'm supporting administration, whatever is best for everybody. And I mean, if it is possible to safely do it, and everybody would feel comfortable with it, I'd be the first one to say let's do it, let's do start tomorrow. But my job as a board member is to also respect and support administration. So that's why that's why I asked, that was my question.
I mean, I think that there is no doubt that all seven of us here, all everybody in this room puts safety, the safety of our staff and our students first. And I can speak from a varsity parents, as a varsity parent, my son goes out there on the field, and he's getting surgery in two weeks, and I know the risks he get, he goes through. He he might not even come out of that field any at any game. However, I'm not here today to speak about what my son, what is right for my son. I'm here because I am the voice. I we were all put here to be the voice of the community. So my thoughts is, if this is what we listen to, and this is what we're hearing, we have to listen, and and maybe we could meet, go meet them in the middle and find out how we can make this work. Of course, always putting their safety first, but is there something we can do? Because obviously, if other districts are doing it, well, what are we, what can we do then to to make sure that we're also doing, keeping them safe, but allowing them or not depriving them of this? I mean, if we, I I was an athlete, so I can say that when we're out there, our last names are not on our jerseys. It's our school. So these kids represent our school, our district, and I know how proud they are to go to get on that field or on that court or as a band member or as a cheerleader. So if there's anything we can do, of course, like I said, keeping safety first and meeting them somewhere in the middle. I know Mr. Ramírez just mentioned that he was at a board meeting yesterday, and the board decided to work something out. So if we can do that and work with our athletic coordinators, our athletic director, our administration, and find a middle ground, by all means, I would love to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Cantú.
Do we have any data on how the other districts are doing since those that are playing sports, those that are? Do we have any data?
The data that we gathered is some, and it's mainly state level data, but it's in one of those. And it it was just about those that are, of all the schools that are playing, which have canceled games due to COVID, right? And that's a list that you have, and I think it was like fifty districts that have either started to play or had strength and conditioning programs and then had to stop, you know, not probably not stop, but maybe just have pauses.
Have any of them been here in the in the Rio Grande Valley? Some of the cancellations?
Look at my list.
Are there any teams that are playing right now in the valley?
I myself have, I'm not heard any, Mr. Cantú, but I don't wanna say that I have not heard of any in the valley stopped.
I think they're on the coast of Wind area where they're starting to play.
When is our deadline? When do we have to make a decision to fall within the guidelines?
Mr. Garza, yeah, I think Mr. Garza can respond to that.
I mean, and I want everybody, I mean, everybody to understand that, you know, this is, this is, I mean, everything changes, and I keep saying this on a daily basis, but we're all in this together. So that's why I I felt that this meaning, I mean, it's very important to all of us, because in two heads are better than one, and I feel that right now, the way our our kids express themselves, we need to figure something out and make sure that we get it right somehow, keeping everybody safe. Not only the kids, but the porter staff. But that's why I wanted to hear from maybe, you know, what your thoughts were when it comes to how we can challenge the situation here.
And if I may say, Alex, if I may say, I do appreciate that we're having this work session, like you said, but this decision was made about two or three weeks ago, and I would have liked to have been more informed as far as or had had this work session back then. So we're we're prepared that when these children come up to us or parents come up to us, we know how to justify justify the the decision that our district has just made. So I, like I said, I'm glad this was needed, but I really would have appreciated if we had met a little earlier so that we can discuss and plan things out.
Yes, good evening, Coach Victor Garza, Director of Athletics, Madam President, Superintendent of Board justices. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you and explain more, share where we're at at this point. The question is, how how early, if something would have happened, needs to happen. It needs to happen like now. Why? Because Monday, as of this past Monday, most schools started their training, football-wise, their required training under U I L. Certain dates that are being looked at. Everything was worked out out of September twenty eighth. September twenty eighth schedule. We notified the the district executive committees, which we belong to three district executive committees. Football is separate and apart in five A, then from volleyball in five A. Okay, and then the six A is a separate district executive committee. So those people have already changed all their schedules. The schedules were formulated previously with us in it, and then we announced that they're, we were excluded from those schedules. So if that were to happen, then that would have to happen like as soon as possible, because those people have already scheduled games with people that ended up rescheduling the games. And it this is where the 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 gritty gritty gets tough.
Have you have any districts in the in the Rio Grande Valley canceled any the season or fall sports besides us and somebody else?
None, Mr. Cantú. As a matter of fact, this past Monday, even neighboring school to the right, both both neighbors, they just started their strength and conditioning aspect of it really valleywide. So in regards to even numbers, I'm sure unofficial, one of our neighboring schools supposedly had three kids already with a positive test. I was trying to confirm that right now to see what the status on that was. But that's that's what some of our coordinators had already gotten away from the staff.
Do we know if we would have to, what are the resources that we're gonna be able to provide when it comes down to testing on our athletes? Would it be on the before-game basis? Well, I guess we don't have a plan yet.
My understanding would be that part be part of our athletic reopening plan, that we would we would go ahead and put those things in place. Again, I think it's a dialogue that needs to continue. Hopefully, and I understand that time is of the essence here. But I believe it's a dialogue that between the the administration and the board right now, we need to go ahead and continue to have so that we can go ahead and try to see if there's a common ground that we can meet on and and also make sure that every precaution that is something that we do decide that we're gonna do is taken, and that we have a plan that that is up to par and and actually sets the standard when it comes to student safety. So with that being said, again, I appreciate, you know, your all's comments and your all's feelings of the subject, and all of us here for our students, the majority of us here can proudly say that we were participants in this athletic program, and it's something we hold near and dear to our heart. And nothing that those kids said today fell on deaf ears. Nothing. So thank you.
Coach, Coach Garza, on the scheduling, because I know Mr. Garza, I mean, was actually filling us in. Is that effective right now with the district that our schools are playing? Like to get the games on board to to count La Jolla into the, how much time do we have on that?
Not much time, just simply because planning purposes for the other schools, that's number one. We might have, with our decision when we came out, they might have had to cross district scheduled games. So that might affect that, where they're now having to go find a game, and they're no longer available because it was a swap. It is of essence. Our notification is immediately to the district executive committee. And we notified them that we would be in communication with them, depending on on the status of the county's situation, is what we actually used. And we've been.
We're very, we're very fortunate, Coach Salinas, that a lot of school board members and people from different areas have reached out to us and and expressed their concern, and then knowing that we're in a tough situation. But I've had the opportunity to speak to quite a few, and they said they would do their best to try to accommodate us. If it is something that we decide to bring back football, they would do their best to try to accommodate us into their schedule.
Well, one of the things that I just wanna point out is all of the schools, we had an A D's regional meeting today. One of the things that I just want to point out is all of the schools, we had an AD regional meeting today. All schools are playing varsity level sports all day. There's no JV, there's no freshman. So that's another point to know that this is only varsity level competition that are being talked about. And with stipulations from school districts of not allowing any parents, any fans, period. No bans, anybody under 30 to others modifying to, or no, or minimum fans and stuff. So all of this, it's a lot of things that are coming into play.
Mr. Garza. I have a question. Have we done like some sort of a survey or something with the students to see who actually wants to, to join or be in a team? Because at the end of the day, we need a whole group. I mean, and I don't want to go in and into all of this when we're not going to have the whole team. Have we ever, I mean, have we looked into that?
No, at this point, we haven't. We've talked about it and we'll be ready to do one if we, you know, if we need to.
Do we confidently feel that we can fill the team in all, in all three high schools?
I, it's going to be, it's close, Mr. Garza. I'm going to say because while we have those that are pushing, we also have some of those that have said, you know, my, our parents that have actually told, I'm glad you did it because I'm not going to risk. I had checked, you know, my son, even though whatever happens, I'm 150% with you, my son is not. So we would have to do that.
Thank you.
Have we surveyed our coaches? Like asked for their feedback or what is their feedback?
Coaches have stated, as Dr. Science has stated, if they're asked to get on the field by most part, but to, that's it, if that is my duty, my call, I will do that. But also looking at their safety also and taking into that consideration. But they have said if that were to happen, then it would definitely have to look into their situation and say, if I have to do it, I have to.
I think I can confidently say, and I don't mean to speak for anybody, but if this was something we decided to reinstate, it would be completely on a voluntary basis for our coaches. We don't want to force anybody to do anything they feel is going to put their family, themselves in harm's way. And I understand that as a coach, it's easier to say that than to actually do it because, I mean, they're there for their kids. They, they spend 10, 12 hours a day with those kids and they're like family to them. But I think all of us as a board, if this is something we do decide, it would be very, very clear and stated that it would be completely on a voluntary basis.
Definitely, yeah. Thank you.
Coach, I know that when this decision was made, you were quoted as saying, this is the game of life. You are an athletic director here at La Jolla ISD and I know you wait the options along with your, your coaches, your coordinators. I know you all thought through, you looked at the data. We all know the data drives decision-making. And I know things have transpired between then and now. And then today, we heard our students and of course, the affective domain kicked in. And I think along with my colleagues where they said, and respecting the decision from administration, yet coming midpoint to some type of plan of action where we can also meet the needs of our students. Very difficult for all of us because of course, all of us, including when you made that tough decision with your, your committee, your coaches. I mean, that's your love. That's your expertise. That's your specialty. So I know that that hurt when you all made that decision back then. And of course, the dynamics have changed since then. And I agree with Ms. Cantú, you know, we should add more discussions. I think we need to have more discussions just because this pandemic is very real and it's not going away where we have smaller work sessions on different topics. But I just hope and pray that the Lord gives us the guidance because all of us do want to safeguard our students, our employees, our community. Governor Abbott said we're in a danger zone. But yet, we at the same time don't want to steal the opportunities from our students. But we also care about our employees. So thank you, sir, and thank you to the rest of the department, all the coaches, for doing what you all do best and that is support your district no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Coach.
Ms. Villarreal, I have a question. On October, the first week of October, we're bringing in the students that don't have access to our wifi, correct? Those are the only students yet, 1,463, correct? Okay. So pretty much everybody's going to be at home. But we have the date of November where we have that date that we're supposed to all come in, correct?
On November 2nd, we can accept any student whose parents want them to. But we have to continue to provide remote instruction for parents who want their kids to stay home.
Do we have an idea of how many of those students would be that parents would request they come back and then face instruction?
When we initially sent the survey, we had probably about between 70 and 80% of parents saying that they would keep kids at home, but we would need to do a different survey. And we have one ready. We were going to release this Friday as a matter of fact, but we didn't want to confuse parents with these 1,400 and then everybody else. So we decided, let's begin the phase in process. And then in a, you know, a week or so after that, we'll send a survey so that we can know how many parents are sending their kids on November the 2nd. And then also pending, we are waiting for that guidance that's supposed to come in tomorrow on whether districts or counties like ours will be able to extend an additional four weeks. And so that might give us more time to say, when are all other kids coming in?
I just wanted to get classification on that because really, it's a little confusing sometimes. That a lot of parents are thinking, well, they have to be back up by October. But we're only having the students that have no access to wifi.
Yes. And out of those 1,463, as Ms. Villarreal said, principals are currently calling them and asking them, since you don't have internet access, we want you to know, we're going to open our buildings, would you like to send your child? And we have some preliminary numbers, but we will wait and see. And maybe, I'm not sure we'll have tomorrow, but maybe tomorrow we can give an update of how many of those 1,400 kids have said that they will come. Pardon me? Thank you. Are there any other comments? I think that based on the feedback that we have gotten from board today, that we will begin to work on a plan that of course keeps student safety, but also work on a plan. So we will begin that. I think that that's the agreement among board trustees. And I just checked with our legal counsel and that's something that we can move forward with. In other words, we don't need a vote on that because it is an administrative decision. I don't know if you want to talk to that event, please, so that we know, we leave this session knowing what we can and cannot do.
Yes, ma'am. While this item is not up for a vote by the board, the administration does have inherent powers on these issues and the administration can take decisions on its own, such as taking decisions after this based on feedback that they heard from you. If the board at whatever point disagrees with whatever decision administration is making, then it becomes a board issue that can come to the board. But for all intents and purposes and moving forward, these work sessions are meant for this purpose, for the administration can hear the board's comments and concerns and administration can make those changes should they need to.
If it can be taken into consideration that any staff member that does not want to participate for safety reasons, that he or she be excused with not, with no fear of losing their job, you know, due to the pandemic. As long as that can be considered and maybe anyone else that can fill in while all this gets cleared up, that they be respected and given that respect with no consequences at all.
Yeah. And then I'll leave that, you know, to Dr. Science, but I'm sure that's the case. I don't think any employee has to worry about their job or anything just because they feel unsafe in doing this. But I'm sure Dr. Science.
That is correct. That is correct. I would like to thank the high school principals for being here as well as our athletic coordinators. Thank you all so much for your input and of course, for being present tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We will adjourn at 8:10.